Hi, welcome everybody. I think so I'm this is I think the only only the second time I've done this, so bear with me. I would like to call the meeting to order at 7:03. Our first order of business is approval of the minutes from our October meeting. Are there any questions or discussion about the minutes? Good, okay, somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes from our October meeting? I saw Barbara and second. Meg? Thank you. I don't know if I can, let me see, can I tell if there's public participation? I don't see anybody on here. So we will call that no public participation. Um, communications? Nothing? Alright, and Linda is not here, Bunny, did she give you any words to say?
Yes, I can be Linda Cole temporarily. She said, "My Tuesday night Zoom meeting continues continues to overwhelm me. Tonight I have two meetings back to back. Meanwhile, I have no news to report from the town board. In October, the town board adopted the budget for 2021 with no tax increase. We continue to meet on Zoom. However, tomorrow night, there will be no meeting due to the lack of referrals. I hope to hear about a meeting date to interview library board trustee candidates. I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and hope to see you in December."
Great, thanks Bunny. Um, finance and budget, Barbara?
Okay, you all have the finance reports and you can see the interest we are earning on our CDs is really kind of sad, but it is what it is. And then looking over the report that Bunny sent us, she is doing extremely well on, it looks like she has spent just about between 70 and 75% of her budget so far with only two months left to go. But I have a question Bunny, are you able to sequester or accrue any money from this year into next year's budget?
Possibly, we can write some purchase orders, but we will have a very short deadline to spend those purchase orders early in 2021. So Gail and I have been talking about this for a couple of months now. And when we get even closer, we can write up those purchase orders. Barbara generally issues a, Barbara Cherno.
Not me.
Generally issues a deadline to receive those purchase orders. It's usually the middle of December sometime. So I expect there'll be a communication from her pretty shortly, letting us know the deadline to get those into her. I will add something about the the monthly budget summary. We had a little surprise this month. Barbara sent me an email last week and said that we were, we looked to be, if she was projecting accurately, about $2,300 short in our hospitalization. This never happened to me before, and that's something over which we don't have all that much control. I was surprised about that because I ordinarily calculate that right to the penny. I'm usually accurate in that. So we've had some personnel changes this year that might have affected that. So you might be noticing money that I am moving out of audit, which we won't be spending this year to cover that shortfall in the hospitalization. But that should show up in next month's budget summary.
Okay. Very good, thanks Bunny.
Any other questions or conversation about the budget reports? Any others, anything else? Alright, how about a motion to accept the finance and budget reports for November? Raj, thank you, second. Melissa? So moved. Personnel committee. I am going to refer this to Rachel because Rachel is the chair of the trustee. Not, um, what am I trying to say? The search committee, right, the trustee search committee. So Rachel, you have an update for us?
Yes, we've received three applications and resumes. I forwarded them to the board and Linda. And I emailed them to the rest of the committee just asking for potential interview dates. So if, I don't know if we want to have a meeting, we we need to have a meeting prior to the interviews, but if anyone wants to get back to me on their availability, just so that we can start scheduling those. And we were hoping that the board, if they have any feedback, comments, concerns, or praise for anybody, just try and get that to us by the Sunday after Thanksgiving, just so that we have some time to review that before we meet with the applicants. Any questions? Good, okay.
Alright, great, thanks Rachel. Um, and officers nominating committee recommendations for 2021? And I think who was the? What was the chair of the nominating committee? I don't recall right now.
I think it was Mary.
Was it Mary?
Mary and Melissa.
Okay, alright.
I don't think one of us is the chair.
Okay, alright, so we should send you recommendations?
We've actually already discussed our selections and I'm not sure if we, do we announce those here or? Yes?
Yes, we present them and then we vote in December.
Oh, okay, alright.
So we have selected Barbara to be president, Rachel to be vice president, and Naraj to be finance officer. And then Mary, did you want to share the other?
And Denise for secretary.
So I guess we'll vote on it at our next meeting then?
Okay.
At our December meeting? So that's all we have for now.
Alright, thank you. Strategic planning, Rachel?
We're just kind of at a pause. We had been working on looking at alternative physical barriers for the library, and there were some concerns from the staff. So we're taking a step back to make sure that all of their concerns are addressed before we move forward with anything there.
Okay.
I have one other update too. This was something we had talked about a couple of meetings ago, but we are working on getting a new exterior sign. And Barbara put me in touch with Jim Costello. And so we met a week ago and he said he was looking at getting estimates for the some kind of an exterior sign that would go maybe near the flagpole or I guess the location is sort of to to be determined still, but we're looking at something similar to the mockup that I had sent a couple of months ago. So he's working on estimates and when we hear something, we'll we'll report back.
Great, that's good news. Um, where are we, bylaws and policies review? Mary, we need to vote on some things tonight.
Yes, we need to vote on the fines and fees waiver and the staff and volunteer borrowing policy and procedure. So those were sent out last month and this month. I've gotten no feedback except for Barbara during last month's meeting. And I guess it's your choice, if you want to pay, you certainly can. You know, if you feel strongly about that, you don't have to have your fines and fees waived if you're a volunteer. So I I make a motion to approve the fines and fees waiver policy.
Alright, Naraj, second, thank you. That moves and then it's the, oh, was it all one? It's all one thing. And then we have discussion.
There's two. There's two. The second one is the staff and volunteer borrowing policy and procedure. So I make a motion to approve that.
Second? Naraj again, Naraj is right there with a thumbs up whenever we need it. Alright, so that is moved and then we need to discuss the internet safety policy for the December vote.
Well, do we vote on these?
Need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't vote. Yes, everybody in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Alright, and that's moved, thank you, thank you Barbara. And then we need to discuss the internet safety policy. If there's discussion.
Can I, I would like to say something about the process. I was very surprised when I saw the policy and this is not, I'm not going to discuss that. But when I wrote something that I thought corrected some of the grammatical things that I saw, I was told it had already been published. And it had been published as something the trustees were considering. And my concern is that it shouldn't go out as something the trustees are supporting, considering, or whatever, if the trustees haven't seen it. So maybe we need to make sure that our time is adjusted so we have enough time for the board to look at materials, make their comments before they're published. Because I said something yet the next day, it was told it was too late, we couldn't deal with it, and it had already been published. I'm thinking, oh my goodness, so what am I doing as a trustee if I don't have a voice? So like, let me finish Bunny. I would just like to say, I think our policy should be, if something is going to be presented to the community on behalf of the trustees, that the trustees have a chance to review it and make comments before it is published. Does that make sense to everyone?
I don't want to interrupt you Barbara, I think there's a misunderstanding there. You asked me about it after we had already published the legal notice.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. It went out as in the trustee's name as a notice and we hadn't seen it.
Oh, it didn't go out as a notice, the original one went out as the attachment to the legal notice. And we held back your amended one to discuss at this meeting. Once we had advertised that one as a legal notice, we couldn't pull the original one back and replace it with yours.
That's what I'm saying. It went out and we couldn't replace it with something that was a little more grammatically correct. And I'm saying, if something is going out, I don't care how it's going out, if it represents the trustees, the trustees should look at it first. Does that make sense?
They should and they did, it was the original one that went out.
But we didn't have a chance to comment, looking at it, we didn't have a chance to comment, that's two very different things.
Well, that was the one that was going to be before the board to discuss at the next meeting. We were given giving the public a chance to comment on it.
Before it goes to the public, if it's going out in the name of the trustees, work with me here, I'm trying to make this very simple. It should, the trustees should have a chance to see anything that's going out in their names. It shouldn't be published and then say, oh yes, I realize you have some concerns, but it's already been published, so we can't deal with it fiddle-de-dee. No, I don't think that's the way of handling it.
Was it going out presented as though it was something that we had created? Or just something that we were under consideration?
It was going out as something that we were considering. The board is going to look at this under its thing, so that's how it went out. Yes, it was a legal document, yes, it was an attachment, but it had the appearance that it was coming with the approval of the board.
I guess I'm confused because if if it, if it's going out saying that the board is going to look at it, then doesn't that mean the board has yet to look at it?
I'm saying what went out saying the board was going to look at it was not a very well-written piece.
Oh, okay.
Because it was, it was and we didn't have a chance, it reflects very poorly on us. And I don't know who wrote it, but I just felt that that was not something, if somebody looked at that and they read it, they would say, my goodness, those people are library trustees? They don't know anything about parallel construction or active voice, I mean, any of those things? I I was just really kind of appalled. And when I said, gee, here, I sat down and redid this, I kept every, all the meanings the same, but it's like active and it's grammatically okay. And I was told, oh no, it's already been published. I'm saying, no, don't publish things that are going out that look like they're coming from the board, even if they're out for approval. If people don't remember that they're out for approval, they just see something being put out by the library board. And I'm embarrassed to say that that's how we are perceived now. If anybody read it, I mean, that's the, that's the other thing.
So maybe in the future, if we're revising a policy, is it okay to just say, you know, we're revising whatever policy it is without attaching the old document? And then that way, when the new one is approved and ready, we send that out?
As long as we don't send out something that the board has not looked at. You know, if we had sent out Mary's policies, that was different because it was updating existing policies. This was a new policy and nobody had seen it. And we didn't have a chance to see it and react to it, and then it was published. And it was like, no, that's, that's not, that puts us in a very, very bad light. I don't know if anybody sat down and read the the thing or not, but I I did and I just thought this, this is really, this is embarrassing.
I I agree, like I think if it's going to the public, if it's the first time at our board meeting, that's one thing. But if it's going out to the public for communication, then that's important that we should have a a good draft to propose.
And we should see it before it goes out and know that it's going to be published.
Right.
Not that it just goes out and, oh, well, this is how we do things, no.
Right, and so this is a procedure thing, so.
Yes, it is, it's it has nothing to do with the merits of the piece. Does that make sense to you all?
The next time you might want to set the hearing to be after a subsequent board meeting instead of as quickly as as it got set, so that you have time to.
Well, I don't know. We will take care of it.
That's a good idea.
That we have to, we don't have that many, have to have that many public hearings about our our policy. We were compelled on this one.
Well, I'm not sure who set the date, but we we didn't even get it until after the date was already set.
The board set the date.
Okay, so I guess, moving forward, and like Bunny said, luckily, we don't have a lot of these things that we, we don't have a lot of public hearings. But I think in the future, it would be a good, it would be good to note that, like Bunny said, the meet, the hearing should be set at a time that gives the board a chance to read what's going out ahead of time.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think that should just be part of our policy moving forward.
Any, so back to the, is there any discussion about the internet safety policy itself that we need to talk about? Did everyone have a chance to look at it? Because we'll be voting on it in December.
We, there is, there was a revised one, the the revision that Barbara submitted was distributed with the documents for this meeting.
Bunny, have you heard from the public at all? Did anyone comment?
No, no, they didn't at the time of the hearing and we kept the comment period open until tonight. And we received no comments on it. I would.
Go ahead.
I'd like to propose an amendment to the version that Barbara wrote in the the last paragraph under access to appropriate material. The last line says, "The library director or his/her designated representative has responsibility for disabling or otherwise modifying any technology protection measures without delay when said research or other lawful purpose is demonstrated." The original read, "without significant delay", and there's quite a difference between without delay and without significant delay. Our current procedures give us 48 hours to evaluate any complaints about things that might have been trapped erroneously in our filter. And we need that 48 hours for two librarians to examine the sites in depth to be sure. Sometimes the superficial examination of those sites doesn't reveal something that really was appropriately trapped by the filter. So we need that 48 hours to look at that. We also can't immediately release it because of the way we're set up. The filter is part of the firewall for the Monroe County Library System. So once we've determined that an item was improperly trapped by the filter, then we submit that to the Monroe County Library System to adjust the firewall to allow that through, and they reserve the right to take up to 14 days. I've never known them to take that long, up to 14 days to adjust the firewall to allow that through. So I think we need to reinsert the word significant before delay in that sentence.
I agree.
Okay. Alright, if there's no other discussion, then we will vote on that next month. Communications, Naraj, you have anything to share?
So they, people did the communications, the library staff did the communications for the trustee selections and all that stuff, so we don't have anything.
Okay. Alright, Mary, an update on the foundation?
Well, I was asked to remove myself as the liaison to the foundation committee. Dick Horowitz, the town lawyer, feels that the library board and the foundation committee are too close. So I don't know what will happen in the future. They are going to talk to their own lawyer. So they may come back, Kathy Weber may come back to you in the future to ask for another liaison between the foundation committee and the library, the board of trustees. So this was on October 27th. I was asked to step down, so I have no report.
Okay.
Is it possible to have, could we ask someone from the foundation to attend one of our meetings or come to one of our meetings?
I think that was deliberately designed to have, to have a relationship so that the two groups knew what the other one was doing. And they could at least not necessarily help each other, but not get in each other's way.
So were they going back to Anita Peltier to find out if that relationship would be okay?
I think it's something.
Yes, I think so.
So I, go ahead Bunny.
Better of longstanding town policy, it might be okay with Anita, but it doesn't appear to be okay with the town to see such a close close relationship, the relationship was the word Dick used.
I think it depends on the town, and I think every lawyer has his or her own opinion.
Yeah, that's probably true, but our town feels that it's, it's a little too close.
Okay, so I guess at this point, we wait for Kathy Weber to be in touch and move on from there and figure out where to go next. I don't know what it will be.
And it may not be till next year, it may be a while.
Right, right, yeah, okay, well, we'll be patient with that and figure it out when it comes. Bunny, directors' report, anything to note?
No, any questions or comments?
I was just wondering how the website was coming along. It wasn't mentioned on your report, but I know last month you mentioned that they were supposed to be rolling it out.
Yeah, well, David, who's monitoring this this meeting for us, could probably speak to that because he's the town website guru. Our understanding is it's coming along quite well. We expect to have, I think, a beta version, but David can correct me if I'm wrong, a beta version available in December, and they're hoping, because it is coming along fairly well, for it to be available in January. I know Miriam Arnold, who is our our website, representing the library website and doing the work on it, has been working on quite a few last minute things to get ours polished. So it sounds like it's, now that David isn't quite so swamped with all the things he was, that were thrown at him with the imposition of the COVID controversy, that he's able to get back and focus on that a little bit and proceed with that. So that's, that's my last knowledge of where we are with that.
That is true, Bunny.
Thank you, Dave.
Alright, any other questions for Bunny about that? Alright. Action items from last month, the trustee search committee is underway and the officers nominating committee is all set. Are there any new? So action items for next month would be for the trustee search committee to receive feedback on applicants from the board and schedule interviews for those candidates? Any other action items we should be aware of?
You'll be voting on the internet safety policy presumably. I will have to, just to let you know about that, I just remembered, I'm going to have to send this new revised version again down to the Monroe County Library System to be vetted. I don't think there'll be any problem with it, but I'll have to send that along so they can see that it's, they're happy with with the way that we've covered all the bases that we're supposed to cover in it.
Alright, any unfinished business?
Bunny, I was curious if you've heard anything with the new COVID cases in Monroe County? If you've been hearing anything about libraries and their ability to stay open or, you know, would have to close again or?
No, we never hear anything about that. We have to kind of make it up as we go along. I don't know how many of you know, I meet every week with all the other directors and we discuss COVID strategy. As you know, we were put into a yellow zone since our whole lockdown started earlier in the year. They've now developed these color zones, so that's kind of a new thing. And yellow zone, there was no problem for us because we were already adhering to all the recommendations that were made for operation under the yellow zone. So that, it didn't make any difference in our operation. So that, it didn't make any difference in our operations. But we are approaching, unfortunately, what looks like the orange zone. And I have been proposing that we, just the same way as we sort of stepped carefully forward to reopening, we just backtrack our steps to do the same thing as we advance into, I use the word "advance" for this, into each zone. So, for example, if it's declared we are going to be in an orange zone at the end of the week, we'll close down the computers. That was the second step that we took in reopening. If we need to proceed back even more into the red zone, we're hoping not to be able to shut down altogether. But most of the libraries have agreed that in the red zone, they'll close to the actual presence of the public in the library. But we'll go back to our curbside service that we did exclusively before we completely reopen to the public, as much as we are completely, that we began opening the doors to the public.
Thanks, Bunny. New business, holiday closings for next year?
I determined the holiday closings as if everything were normal. I think that gives us the best springboard to work around. We need something fairly solid to work with. So, as I said, I set those just to, just as if this were a normal year. And we can, because sometimes we don't know things until maybe a week before. We might have an unexpected closing or an unexpected opening. I thought it better to treat it as if it were normal. And then we, it gives us the flexibility to make the last-minute changes we need to make. Have to be able to give something to Monroe County Library System because tied in with our closings are settings that they have to put within the integrated library system that will automatically calculate things like overdue fees and due dates, things like that. So they have to have a pretty good idea of what are going to be firm close dates. I can change those at the last minute if I need to. But they have to have a pretty solid ground to work with going into, probably at the end of this month, they'll ask me to submit that to them. So we need to have something kind of firm to give them so they can proceed with their work.
Any questions about that? Do we, we don't vote on that, do we, right?
Yeah, you need to approve them or not.
Okay. All right. Any discussion about that? No? All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the holiday closings for 2021? Naras, second. Rachel, all in favor? We're going to vote this time, all in favor, raise your hand. All right, it's unanimous, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Claims Payment Authorization. That was, was it Meg?
All right, that was me. Yes, so I went in on Friday. So I move that we approve the payment of vouchers in the amount of $49,456.16.
All right. Who would like to second that? Rachel, all in favor, raise a hand. All right, we're good to go unanimously, so moved. And so next month, it will be, looking around and going through the alphabet. Is it, is it me?
Yes.
I think it's me. Okay, I'm the winner.
Amy, do you mind if I, do you mind if I do it next month? Just because tax season is around the corner, so then I'll just.
And then you'll skip yourself down the short, that's fine.
Okay, cool.
I won't fight you for it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, anything else that we, we good to go? All right. Who would like to make a motion to? Melissa, second. Barbara, all in favor? All right. We have adjourned. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.